Call the meeting to order. And at this time, I'm going to ask Wilson Cates to open us in prayer. We can all stand, please.
Fire your heads, please. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this day, Lord. Thank you for allowing us another time to come together and make plans for the city of Livingston, Lord Jesus. Please be with our leaders as they make decisions for the good of all of our people here in the city. Lead, guide, and direct us, Lord, as we try to keep you first with all of our decisions. We'll give you all the praise and the glory and the honor today and forevermore. In Jesus' name, amen.
Bruce, you want to make us an equation, please?
Please, please. To the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Mr. Smith, you have a call, please.
Ask my name, Bill.
Present.
Alvin Meldrum.
I'm here.
Alvin McHattler. Alvin McRita.
Here.
Alvin McCroft.
Here.
Alvin Minnou.
Here.
All present.
Okay, and everyone did well using their mics, but please, when we discuss anything tonight, please turn the mic on so we can hear it on the recording. Okay, next, we have approving the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion to approve. I rec. Dell, do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Alvin Bill Mender. Let's vote. All in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, next on the agenda, we have public comments. Do I have anyone present for any public comments? Okay, see if there's no one there. We have, next is additions or deletions to the agenda, and actually, I do have some additions. So, I need to, the main reason we did our public hearing today was to increase the certified tax rate, and I forgot to put in there that we need to do the resolution for that. So, I'm going to put that as number one on old business, and then we'll make the bid number two. And then, I want to add in on new business, the report on the condition of our public pool. We have a couple of people here to talk about that. And then, I need to add, I do have Ken Warner here to just read our Purple Heart proclamation because it's Purple Heart Month, so I'd make that two on new business. And then, I'm going to move the resolution for the Tennessee ECD that is number one on new business right now. It'll be number three, and we will add in there also the resolution for the engineering firm there. So, we'll just move the other two down the line. Do I have a motion to add these items to the agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion by Bill Mender.
I'll say it.
A second by Ann Skripal. All in favor?
All right.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, next, I'm going to just, we're going to re-discuss the resolution for adoption of the tax rate. So, resolution number 2025-8-2 is the resolution for the mayor and board of Alderman to the town of Livingston adopting the actual tax rate exceeding the state certified rate by point oh five. The town of Livingston Board of Mayor and Alderman, acting as a town council, hereby adopts and confirms an actual tax rate of one point one three nine six, which will exceed the certified tax rate of one point oh eight nine six by point oh five, as reflected in the town's fiscal year budget 2025 to 2026. Do I have a motion on the table to adopt this resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Alvin Mender.
I'll say it.
A second by Alvin Bruce Elder. Is there any discussion? Okay, if there's no discussion, let's, your rock call, please.
Alvin Meldrum.
Yes.
Alvin McRita.
Yes.
Alvin McCroft.
Yes.
Alvin McRita.
Yes.
Ask my name, Bill.
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, next on the agenda is the revisiting the bid on Hope Press Drive Booster Station. You guys have this in front of you from lost time. They did clarify a couple of issues. We had option A, which is to repair. We had option B, which was to replace the pump. I think we had a fair amount of discussion about this the last time. You guys can see the pricing on there. The repair was eleven thousand seven eighty-eight, and the replacement was twenty-one thousand one ten. They did put some notes at the bottom. I did ask about shipping, which they said, you know, it was difficult because of not knowing actually which direction they were going to go. They said they didn't think it would exceed five hundred dollars. They said if it did, they would cover that, but they thought it would be even less than five hundred.
What do you guys recommend, repairing or replacing?
Well, I think we had talked about this the last time, that, and when I talked to the water department on it last time, I think Eric was here, and I don't know if he explained that, but he felt like replacement was probably going to be our best choice because we may just be back in a similar situation that he had. And I know, I mean, it's a lot of money, but if they, you know, from repairs in the water department, it's not excessive on the replacement.
I will make a motion to go with option B, just the pump replacement.
Okay, we have a motion on the table by Rex Dell to go with option B, which is replacement of the pump. Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Wait a second. Bill Mender? Any further discussion?
Yeah, they had one for that. This is coming out of our department, right?
Yes. Okay, if there is no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, next on the agenda is, we have Clint Melton here, who is going to talk about the pool as, from two entities. He's actually very involved with parks and president of our chamber. I think you're president of the park board right now. I might have said that incorrectly. So, I'm going to let him just talk a little bit about the pool, and then Michael Hayes is also, I don't know which one of you guys is going to go first.
I don't.
He's going to talk about some of the condition of the pool specifically.
Just push it off.
Push, just push it one time.
There you go.
Let me just say this first, one reason to, you know, we are trying to apply for some grant money, which, for improvement of our parks and pool, and I felt like you guys really needed to know our concerns about the pool, and so, and maybe get some comments out in the community, concerns about the pool as well, before we need to apply for the grant. They want to know all the concerns of the community.
So, we can start with a slideshow here. This is our deck when we come into the city pool, when you walk out to the pool. Guys, the deck is, it's shot, as you can see, the cracks in the deck as you walk through the pool. We've got several, several of those. Like I said, it's just deteriorating really bad, and it's becoming a trip hazard as well. And it's time to do some maintenance, you know. The pool's over, it's forty-five years old, and I don't know if we've done a lot of maintenance since the pool's been open, but we're definitely due to do some maintenance at the city pool from the TV operator. Show us some more. These are some more cracks that we have on the deck and around the pool. You can see that's around the diving board. You can see that patch there on the far side of the ground, that's actually where the jet's going to the pool. So, we've got so many leaks in the pool right now. We're running two water hoses to keep the pool up, okay? And we have to use a fire hydrant at times to keep the pool full. So, we've got leaks. We don't know which direction they're coming from. It could be in the plumbing that's coming from the pump house to the pool. Don't know. That's something we're going to have to get a leak detection company to come up here to do, to find out where we're leaking that for sure. That's just more pictures of the deck around the pool. Like I said, the concrete's ate up. This is inside of the three-foot area. As you can see, the concrete inside the pool's chipping away. We've got a slider, slide's broke that we're going to have to replace next season or take it down. Like I said, inside the pool areas, you can kind of see these pictures here. That's what we're working with. So, we don't really know exactly where the water is going. This is our pump house, okay? As you can see, our old filtration system there, the first picture on the left, it's old, very, very, very old. All of this needs to be replaced. That's our plumbing. As you can see, we've got a strap holding stuff together, but that's basically what we're working with at the city pool, and all of that needs to be replaced. And the pool's good for the community, and I would like to see the city in the future do something with this. And the last picture here is what's sad is our two-foot kiddie pool is not operational. It's just, we've got leaks, we can't keep water in it, and when we try to fill it up, we lose some water from the city pool. Basically, we've made a, it's basically a deck over so no kid falls into it and gets hurt, so we've got some major issues at the city pool, and it needs to be addressed in the future. I'll turn it over to Clint up.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you all for letting me come this week. I'm sorry for my tire, I just came from football practice. I am on the ballpark board and Chamber of Commerce and own a business here in town, and my family visits and uses the pool area on a regular basis every year. Being on the ballpark board, I hear I talk to a lot of people, and over the last year, I have a lot of comments just about the condition of the pool area, and a lot of it is safety, safety minded. I've shown the condition of the deck, the concrete deck, it's chipping away. And not only is it chipping away, it comes in safety hazards, but it's also very hot. There's a lot, there's a lot of things, issues, issues with that. But, you know, that stuff, that stuff's really not in question just because, you know, everybody can see that. To me, the comments and stuff that I've had, they're not, they're not bad. I think that everyone wants something that they can be proud of, something that they can use, something that they see to be proud of. Being raised here in Livingston, own a business here, we want Livingston to be vibrant, we want Livingston to have the best and have something they can be proud of. And I think that doing something to help our pool, something to help our kiddie section, bringing it back, maybe a splash pad area, something there, to invite the kids in, the family friendly right there, I think that would go a long ways for our city. And it would be great to provide fun and safe opportunities for our residents and our kids to help improve their health too, because swimming does, is great exercise in the summer. I think that would help a lot of our kids and our adults, all of our residents maintain and improve their health every year. Like I said, a splash pad or something of that nature could go around in that kiddie pool area, we believe, and I have a lot of people reach out to me and ask me about that. So, I wanted to pass along some of the stuff that I've heard from the community, as being on the ballpark board, being over there. You know, I applaud you guys and the city for what they've done, what you've already started doing there with the pickleball courts. If you drive by there and see the pickleball courts are full at all times, they look great, it looks amazing, and just, this is a continued step to that, to making that part where the pool is that much better and making the whole area better. There's many times where I drive by and everyone I go to the pool, and there's a bus there, and there's kids coming from all over, not just, not just our area. We want kids from our area, we want people from our area, but we, I mean, people come here from everywhere, especially if we've got something really nice. The decks, I mean, there's not much else to say about the deck there, it can be done, especially if we can do something with grant money, as the mayor will do, if the grant funds are out there and we can, we can apply for those. I think that's really what the steps take there, that's what the community's looking forward, and it's kind of a situation where we've got the great looking pickleball courts, they're being used, they're being everything, let's continue and let's go down that road and make it all look good, because you have one area that's kind of looking not so good here, and the other one's looking great. And I think the community sees that, and they'll come out and they will, they will be off for this, so. I don't have much else to say, but if you have any questions or anything, I'll answer any questions that you have, if there's anything else.
I mean, I think even the fencing around it needs to be done as well, and, you know, one of the things that I wanted to comment, I mean, I grew up at the pool, so I mean, it's kind of a big interest for me, but, you know, kids need to learn how to swim. I mean, period, they need to know how to swim. So, that's, you know, another place I'm coming from, we need this to stay in.
They do. Swimming lessons is big over there. During summer, we have swimming lessons with kids all over the place coming to learn to swim. I remember, I did, I learned to swim at the Livingston City Pool, and several more of us did too as well. And the pool's big. We, you know, city cooks and buses kids up here to our pool. They're up here twice a week, and they're probably bringing seventy-five to a hundred kids every time they come, okay? Actually, I got emailed this afternoon from the leisure department, leisure services department, just talking about, you know, the city pool and stuff, how they don't have one, but they bring their kids up to our pool. So, it's, it's really big, and like I said, I'd just like to see the council, if we can get some grant money, mayor, maybe we can do something with that.
Are there grants out there for us?
Well, we are, we are flying right now. We're in, we're in the grant season right now, so there's one in particular that, I mean, I know it could be a long shot, you know, but because they don't award it, they don't award a lot of them, but we're still going to, we're still going to apply for it. You know, the development district's doing that for us, you know, it's no charge to us, but there's, you know, things that we want to provide to them so they know how big the need is for us to be aware of that.
It's a little necessary for our little community, and it's, it's something that, it's a summer activity that so many people can take advantage of, and it complements the ballpark over there, and it goes with everything that is involved with summer fun for children. So, I think it's something we've got to support.
And I think Bruce going home with that, if you look through some of the stuff I've talked about, man, we could have aerobics classes over there, you know, for everybody to come over and just be swimming, things of that nature. Just look over, there's several different things we can do to get people there, and people really enjoy coming over there.
Is there shade over there? Any shade? Shade's pretty important in the summertime months.
It is.
Mothers and their children, small children and...
We, we need some shade.
Yeah.
Bruce, we need some shade.
Get some buildings built up.
Some pavilions, maybe, maybe if we had a couple pavilions over there. We've got, we've got lean offside building, but you can't get fifteen people under it. I mean, if we had some more shade, that would be great, so.
Mayor, who is pursuing the grants, is your office, or?
We met with the development district last week and to start the process, and I have like four pages of things to do to show the need for it. Letters of support would be great. If anybody wants to volunteer, write a letter supporting that, send them our way for us to send in with the application.
I just want somebody to give a thought, and it takes a while to get, well, we, it takes two years.
Yeah, it does. Okay, Clint's got one more, then.
I've got one more.
Okay.
Do you have a blueprint layout, what you would like to see done, and possible prices?
So, I've gave Mayor Burnett some quotes on some things as far as like from lost time to the pumps, the filtration system. Actually, we looked at putting a liner inside of the pool, which would be a little bit cheaper. So, I have presented some prices to the mayor on what it would cost. Not for sure if I gave her the one on concrete or not, but hopefully.
I don't have the one on concrete. I do have a liner, which is not there, and, you know, if we're, if we're going to apply, we're going to, we're going to go big, you know, because I think we need to, the liner might be something that wouldn't last near as long, we need something long lasting.
Give your, give your big wish list and break it down from there, I mean.
I'll pick it all together, and then I can come back, present what, concrete and everything, head to toe, what it would cost, so.
Yeah, and if you have all the layout and everything, when they get ready for the grant, you're not scrambling to get it in, everything, you've got it all planned out and ready to go.
Okay.
So, just that's it.
Yeah, I know it would be a good idea to put some sales that are up like down at the park, you know.
Somebody's in our...
Sales, the shade can...
Yes, 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 yes. That's perfect.
Yeah, that's something we need.
No, I think I was going to say back to what I said was, a lot of times, people can look at issues, and you see them as issues, but you can also look at these issues and see them as opportunities. And I think this is an opportunity for our city to do something out here that can be special, and so, that's kind of how I look at it. On that piece of paper in front of you, there's a lot, like Mike said, there's a lot of ideas on there where the pool could even be used out of season, where we can use the pool area even during the winter time, fall, or early spring, that kind of thing. I mean, you can have LED lights and be used later on in the night. There's a lot of different things that we can do with the pool, and I think we can look at those as opportunities for, to improve our city, for our residents, and our community, so, that's all I can say.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, guys. We'll kind of keep you updated if we get any, I mean, there's, and we may need some help, so, once we read through, like I said, I just got the paperwork last week, and once we read through everything, we'll go from there, so, okay? And this was just an information session, not a vote or anything, I just want y'all to be aware, so, thank you both for coming and presenting that, so. Okay, next up, we have Ken Warner, who is the commander of the American Legion, and he, this is Purple Heart Month, and we have signed a proclamation, and he's going to tell you a little bit about what we're doing.
Thank you, Mayor Burnett. Just to give you a little history of this, I belong to an organization out of Nashville called Creative Vets. I was out on a songwriting deal last November, Veterans Day, and met a young gentleman, retired master sergeant, combat medic. I brought him out here for a Memorial Day program, and at the time, he asked me, he says, "Do you think City of Livingston would want to be a Purple Heart city?" I said, "Well, let's find out. Mayor's right there, I'll introduce you to the mayor." So, I introduced Mayor Matthew Sims. That's how this all got started. From that point on, it's snowballed. The city's going to be a Purple Heart city. Our American Legion post is going to be the first American Legion post in Tennessee to be a Purple Heart post. The VFW is going to be a Purple Heart post, the second VFW post in Tennessee, and SPAR is joining in, and we're all sharing expenses to bring this gentleman. He drives from Fort Sill, Oklahoma, to do something like this. His last tour in Afghanistan, he got only three times, but that's how this all got started. I'm going to read the proclamation that the city has come up with. Whereas the City of Livingston, Tennessee, and our community have great admiration and utmost gratitude for all men and women who have and are selfishly serving their country and this community in the armed forces, and whereas veterans have paid the high price of freedom by leaving their families and communities and placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all, and whereas contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who serve the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens, and whereas many men and women in uniform have given their lives while serving in the armed forces, and whereas citizens of our country have received the Purple Heart as a result of being wounded or killed while engaged in combat with an enemy force construed as a singular meritorious act of essential service, and whereas the City of Livingston seeks to remember and recognize veterans who are recipients of the Purple Heart. And whereas I proclaim the City of Livingston to be a Purple Heart city honoring the service and sacrifice of our nation's men and women in uniform wounded or killed by the enemy while serving to protect our freedoms, now therefore be it resolved, on this thirtieth day of June 2025, I Lori Alder Burnett, Mayor, support the City of Livingston becoming a Purple Heart city in recognition of our community's Purple Heart recipients. Signed, Lori Alder Burnett, Mayor. Ceremony itself is going to take place August 29th down at the park, Matt Rotary Stage at nine o'clock. I encourage all of you, if you know of any Purple Heart recipient, please encourage them to be there at this ceremony. It's going to be, it's going to be quite an ordeal for not only the city, but for these three posts that are involved, and I really thank you for stepping forward, all of you, to get this done. For the city, it means, to me, it means a lot. The posts, it opens up grant opportunities for us, so we're looking at helping veterans and our community whatever way we can. I thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for reading the proclamation. We're excited to have the ceremony on August 29th at nine o'clock, so if you can be there, please do to honor our veterans, so. Okay, next up, Ray, you're going to be on. You're going to be reading a couple of resolutions about our Livingston Industrial Park. Oh, what type, hang on. Rebecca?
Is anyone ready?
No.
Is anyone ready?
I'm on now.
You're on now.
All right. So, you want me to give the who decided this person directly? Should we read Chris Lush's?
You can do the Reader's Time test version.
So, you all will recall that we had applied for a Tennessee Department of Business, a community development, signed up grant back in March, presented in Nashville in June, and on the 23rd of July, we're notified by the Governor and Commissioner that Livingston was awarded a one billion dollar grant for improvements to the city's last remaining industrial park lot. It's a little bit of an unusual thing in that it ordered us more than we asked for, but it encouraged us to do some of this work as well. So, the first resolution is simply authorizing a mega contract with state for this grant, and also approving... and also approving the match, it's a ninety-ten grant match, so our grant match is one hundred eleven thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars. And so, the first resolution is to approve that, and let's see forward with the state. I would ask for a favorable consideration.
We had previously agreed to a seventy-five-thousand-dollar match, but with the increase to a million dollars, it's just additional approximately thirty-five thousand dollars, whatever that math is, to add to that, because when they called and asked if we wanted more money, you know, it's, we get more for what's needed out there to bring in industry.
I'll make a motion to approve, except for current.
Motion made by Rex Dale.
I'll second.
Second by Rocco Rafter. Is there any further discussion? Okay, let's take a vote on this.
Augur the major?
Yes.
Augur the proctor?
Yes.
Augur the ruler?
Yes.
Pass by the way?
Yes.
Augur the melter?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, Ray.
So, the second resolution is relating this resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into and approve with Kim Littomer to provide engineering services for this project. We solicit, request, well, we solicit, request for qualifications, we had three firms that submitted. The mayor, myself, and Amanda, kind of reviewed those three firms. And I would say it was close, but Kim Littomer came out on top. I had known them for years as a really good transportation firm. But, with all the industrial work that they have done and are doing now, including the Blue Oval Project in the state's industrial park in West Tennessee, it was just really impressive. And so, we're asking you to allow the mayor to enter into the group with Kim Littomer in the amount of one hundred twenty-five thousand, eight hundred dollars, ninety percent of which will be paid for out of the grant. And I would again ask for favorable consideration of this resolution.
Now, where exactly is this?
This is in, exactly a fourteen-point-five acre, a fourteen-point-nine acre site in the city industrial park across from Livingston.
The old man hall?
The old man hall.
It is, it is in only the remaining publicly owned industrial property in the county.
Gotcha, gotcha. If Keith Smith later here, they don't know the town.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion made by Bill Linder.
I'll second that.
Second by Bruce Elder. All in favor? Motion passes. Okay, anybody have anything else for Ray, before we let Mr. Ray Evans get opposite if he wants to?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks, Ray. Okay, next up is Jeanne. Representative of the Main Street Historic District, and gonna do a chamber report, because Zach had a county meeting tonight as well.
Yes, I sense his regards, he could make it tonight, so... A couple things I just want to update on, first of all, as you know, the courthouse construction is progressing.
When do you think that's gonna be everything done?
Two weeks.
Have you heard that yet?
Two weeks, yeah. No, we, I think it's on schedule, but I think everything's looking good, so far the weather's held up. We've had remarkably good success with moving the merchants and building owners off the squares, they're asking them to park elsewhere, and we've got plenty of parking spaces available. I don't think anybody's had any downturn in business as a result of it, we were very concerned about that, but it looks really good. A lot of work going on up there, and I'm taking daily pictures of my windows, so I'll have that all documented at the very end, so, it'll be something to see. We just completed our, this year's series of our live in Livingston concerts. We had two concerts back-to-back, one last Saturday, one the Saturday before. They were very well attended, we had a lot of great comments. People from out of town who had come to these concerts, I found out some of these folks are coming, every time we have a concert, they're coming to Livingston for a concert, and they follow us. And so, they're very complimentary of our park, our venue, the way we put it together. We didn't have any major issues, and no complaints that I know of. We are, Main Street is currently reviewing and getting ready to apply for, as the mayor said, it's grant season. There is a Main Street twenty-twenty-five downtown improvement grant that we are gonna apply for. It's between fifty and five hundred thousand dollars. We will put together the best package we can, and hopefully we'll be as lucky as we were with the industrial site grant as well. Planning is underway for Christmas in the country. We've got, you know, another big year coming up. The, if you remember last year, we did the individual Christmas trees around the square in addition to the lights we put up. That had great reviews, and we've sold more trees this year to put out, and it'll be bigger and better than it was last year. We also, in October, the Arts Council will have the Open Air Art Festival again this year. We have applicants that are coming from far and wide all over the United States. We've got some attention, and people coming from Wisconsin, from New England, from all different areas of the country to compete in that contest, so that's become a big draw for us as well. And the grant we're talking about, if we do get that, it's a twenty-five percent match, it's good for the facades of the buildings. There's a park and community service piece of it as well. Again, all of it within the historic district, but we're hopeful that we'll get that. Other than that, I don't have anything, if you have any questions, other than when it will be finished? Thank y'all.
Thank you, Jeanne. We've got a day when we look at the progress. Okay, last but not least on the agenda, we have the water plant roof bids before us. You guys can see that we advertised, both of the bids were, they came back with all the elements that we had included in the advertisement for the bid. First one was Genesis Roofing for eighteen-three, and the second one was Dutch Voice Construction for twenty-three seven ninety-six. So, we just need to, that roof needs to be done.
I'm not familiar with the companies having both of them repainted.
Yes, and those are the only two that bid on that project too. It is a, we have a building out by the water plant, right on the water. It's not a, you know, it's something that has to be done, it's a specific material that has to be done on that little building that sits on the edge of the lake, so...
There's significant difference in the bids, do we know the references on both these companies?
Yes, yeah, and that came, our insurance people went out because we wanted to make sure there wasn't any damage or anything, but we have checked both of them out, and they're all bonded. Do you have a motion?
I make the motion to accept the bid for Genesis Roofing of eighteen-three.
Okay, all right, we have a motion to accept Genesis Roofing of eighteen-three from Bruce Elder, do you have a second?
I'll second.
And a second from Lance Rubel. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, any other business?
Five dollars, motion adjourned.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn by Rex Dale, we're gonna have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a second by Bill Linder, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, meeting adjourned.